Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for February 12. We have just one item on our agenda for today, and that is county administration and a work session on the 2020 census and redistricting presentation. We have with us Jeff Kincaid, our management analyst, and I'll toss it over to you to introduce any of our guests and to kick us off.
Thank you, Chair Buck. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Jeff Kincaid, management analyst in county administration. I'm here before you today for discussion on the 2020 census and redistricting. This should really build on the work that we've done so far, as well as the presentation that you received yesterday from Brenda Wilson, the executive director of Elco. So before we get started on the presentation, I just wanted to frame the discussion with a brief overview of the timeline we have in the month and the year coming ahead for census and then subsequent redistricting. So Census Day is coming soon. It's April 1st, 2020, and the census counting efforts are really going to conclude in earnest on July 31st. After Census Day, it's a lot of in-person outreach, which is trying to get to those folks that haven't responded yet. And that data will then be due to the president for apportionment counts and Congress, I should say, on December 31st of 2020. Then counties and state governments can expect redistricting counts by March 31st of 2021. Just on the side of the county side on the outreach we're doing regarding census, we've assembled a small team to get the word out about the census, which met on February 5th to develop a plan for our efforts to conduct outreach and raise awareness for the upcoming census. We produced a small set of tasks and deliverables that included targeted efforts for certain areas to increase response rates, some of the areas that you heard about yesterday that had higher non-response rates. And this work will continue in the weeks leading up to the census. And now for what brings us together today, the Board has requested that staff coordinate a work session to discuss the census and redistricting and to include experts on population statistics and forecasts, as well as redistricting. To that end, we don't have Charles yet, but we will have Charles Randerson, who's the interim director of the Portland State University's Population Research Center. But we do have Paul Dillard, who's professor at Willamette University College of Law, and he's with us today. So Charles got stuck on the Amtrak train on the way down, so he's going to be coming a little bit late. But Paul's agreed to be very flexible, and he is going to start us off by talking about redistricting. So I'll hand it over to Paul to kick things off.
Thank you, Jeff. It's a pleasure to be here. I love coming to Land County to give talks on redistricting. This is my third. I spoke to the Springfield City Club two summers ago, I think where I met Commissioner Bernie, invited by Joe Leahy a couple of years ago, and then I spoke to the Eugene City Club this past fall. And so you'll see a version of that talk, although I've altered it a bit to focus more on local government redistricting. But I want to lay kind of a framework of how the census interacts with redistricting mandates nationally. So any legislative district, whether it's state legislature, county commission, city council, needs to comply with this mandate of one person, one vote, which the U.S. Supreme Court laid down under the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution in Reynolds versus Sims, which for its time was actually a fairly controversial case. It was decided six to three by the Supreme Court, but it stood the test of time and for now remains the law of the land with no indication that the Supreme Court has any doubts about continuing with it. So states therefore need to redraw their legislative districts at least every 10 years. They can do it more often. Every now and then you'll hear about a state doing a mid-cycle redistricting, but they need to draw them at least every 10 years based on the new census data. U.S. House districts work essentially the same way, too, although the reason they have to be equal within a state is under a separate provision of the U.S. Constitution, Article 2. I won't get into that here, but just be aware of that. So obviously Oregon, as Charles will talk more about, will have to redraw its congressional districts after the 2020 census based on population movement, and it looks like Oregon's going to give another seat based on current data. So in 1968, the U.S. Supreme Court extended the mandate of Reynolds versus Sims down to the county level in a case involving Midland County, Texas, where you had vast disparities among the district sizes that elected county commissioners. Midland City had 60 or 70 times the population of other parts of the county, each of whom elected one commissioner. Supreme Court struck that down in an extension of Reynolds versus Sims. This remains good law and is essentially taken these days to mean that all, at least general-purpose local government units, city, county, have to abide by one person, one vote. And then in a variety of other cases, which I'm not going to get into in my talk, but I'm happy to answer questions about, the Supreme Court held that some special-purpose districts, like school boards, for instance, are subject to one person, one vote as well if they use districts. And then all districts and all redistricting has to comply with the Voting Rights Act, which was initially passed by Congress in 1965 and has been reauthorized over the years since then, although the Supreme Court has neutered parts of it recently, or about six, seven years ago, the decision, and it doesn't really affect Oregon, but has effects on other parts of the country. So in addition to, this is kind of the federal constitutional framework, in addition to that, most states like Oregon have their own laws on legislative redistricting. And so this just gives you a sense of what the Oregon legislature has chosen to prioritize: contiguity, equal population, of course, that's required anyway, but doesn't hurt to put it in the statute; utilize existing geographic or political boundaries; not divide communities of common interest, very important term, but one that's kind of flexible and about which there's often much debate; be connected by transportation links; not favor any political party incumbent legislator or other person. And then this is sort of Oregon's adoption via statute of the mandate of the Voting Rights Act: not be for the purpose of diluting the voting strength of any racial or ethnic or minority or language group. The Oregon Secretary of State's office has also further interpreted that statute and issued administrative regulations that get into even more detail about what some of those terms in the statute mean. So for instance, they have some further guidance on not dividing communities.
Miss a date on that one?
The date? I don't know.
Commissioner Sorensen.
I just wanted to ask, first of all, do you mind being interrupted to answer questions?
Not at all.
And okay, so then I'll ask my question. Back on the list of statutory, the previous ones, yeah, be contiguous, be of equal population. Does the word "equal" mean equal, or does it mean mostly equal?
I don't know how far the legislature has pushed that.
They're often not equal because equal would imply down to even a half of a person or something.
Right. I think the state legislature tries hard to get it pretty close to equal. You are allowed some flexibility under federal constitutional law, which I'll talk about.
But I mean, they use language like "equal." Does that apply to local governments or just to the state?
No, this just applies to the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any statutory rules that apply to school districts, counties, cities?
Not that I've found.
Okay. So then are we left then to just the federal constitution, or are we also under the Oregon constitution?
The federal constitution, and if the Oregon Supreme Court were to interpret the Oregon constitution, could they have any additional rules, which I'm not aware of?
Okay.
Then that could apply. But it's essentially just the federal constitution and the county charter.
Okay. And so in the case of, let's say, the state legislation for governing the state, if we use a term like a community, no division of communities of common interest, we all have examples of where the legislature has divided communities of common interest.
Right.
I guess in the case of my ex-senate district, I had a territory that went all the way up to Mill Iron Road, well, from your vantage point in Salem, let's just say, somewhere between Eugene and Junction City, and I had grassseed farmers up there, and yet I had the University of Oregon in my senate constituency. That seemed to divide communities of interest, the university being in two senate districts at that time, and the grassseed farmers of Northern Lane County not being with their maybe friends in Southern Lynn County. So they have divided communities of interest. What is the, which of those factors is most important?
Well, equal population is the most important because you're going to run into a federal constitutional problem there. I think the reason why maybe you've seen so much of the division of communities of interest is because it's a vague term. And so there's a lot that the legislature can sort of, there's a lot of room to maneuver in there, and I'm not aware of a successful suit under that term. But yeah, I guess it's just due to the inherent basis of it.
Commissioner Farr.
Sorry for the out-of-queue question earlier, but my reason for that is because of the 2000 redistricting, which had some pretty imbalance redistricting. And Senator, the House District 11, for instance, so what does the community of Shedd in North Lynn, South Lynn County and University of Oregon have in common, well, the state state rap? And that district wraps all the way around Springfield, up to Mackenzie Bridge and around through Swedenholm, through Lebanon and Swedenholm. And my district, House District 14, was from downtown Eugene, which is a population mass as like as me. And it also could also went all the way out beyond Chichester, so the farmers out there turned out there like them, too. But it's badly imbalanced, particularly if you look at Eugene, it goes like stuff like a pie and push way out into rural, this into the rural area, whereas Bend, they kept intact into the entire rural, and Bend is a separate.
Right.
So some political force was at play there, and that was the one that was in my, that's a state rapery.
Yeah, so I have two thoughts on that, and I wasn't around for that, so I didn't live through it. I was not living there at the time. But one is, you know, notice the term is not divide communities of common interest, not the entire Alvin has to be a community of common interest. Now, I gather you're saying they still divided the U of O campus, so arguably, maybe they did that, but...
Well, this one, it fully has a U of O campus in it, but it also has Shedd.
It was the previous, previous one I was referring to.
But, you know, there are also, to challenge or to object, you know, you have to be bothered by that, and maybe that Eugene wanted to be divided to have three, a chance to elect them three representatives. I don't know. I don't know the story. I wasn't here for that, but...
Linda and I were going through a different redistricting at the time in 2000. It was pretty strenuous in the city of Eugene. Oh, and Kelly actually was the one that wrote it. Yeah, you were the one that drew the crazy lines that we had to fix.
Commissioner Bernie.
Could you define common interest?
Well, I'll give you what the, the state secretary of state has given us: urban neighborhoods, rural communities, or other communities. I mean, that's really as far as it goes.
It really doesn't scratch the surface if one wanted to identify what common interests be.
Yeah, you know, I was at a forum with the late Secretary of State Dennis Richardson and some other folks who've worked in this area for a while, and I remember somebody in the room said for one round of redistricting, a community of common interest was a basketball league, a high school basketball league. So it's very flexible, and there have been some who've wanted, or I remember at that meeting, folks wanted more definition from the Secretary of State on what that would mean. But, you know, right now, it's a pretty flexible term.
Commissioner Rosovich.
Thanks. I just wanted to note that I just handed out to the rest of the Commissioners a copy of the guidelines, which were given by then Secretary of State Kate Brown. When we started our redistricting, these were the guidelines she provided to local governments to do their redistricting, which basically are the same as the state statute. And on the backside of that is a section of our charter that describes our districts as the charter describes them. And it has the, what says scenario one was the 2001 adopted districts, and then scenario eight is the scenario that got adopted in 2011. So it's kind of a quick reference for anybody.
Thank you, Chair.
I could share. Yeah. Thanks. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I actually have a couple of copies.
I'm going to request from staff to create slides that could superimpose one of these over the other so we can actually see visually the changes that were made leading up to this. That would be great.
Yeah, kind of do.
Yeah, that kind of thing.
Kind of got to do the flipping back and forth thing a little bit.
And just, you may know this as our speaker, but I wanted to make sure that we acknowledged that we have several members of League of Women Voters here.
So, you know, just taking a quick glance at this memo, and I thank you for sharing it with me. I hadn't seen this before. I'm always a little skeptical of this notion of traditional districting principles, just because I think there's a lot of disagreement as to what those are. So whenever somebody says that, I would just say, you know, have your antenna up and kind of really question, what do you mean by that exactly? What do you mean by traditional? Because there are disagreements, you know? If you want, and I'll talk about this a little later, if you are drawing, let's say, partisan districts for a partisan office, which the county commission is not, but the state legislature, you might want partisan ballots in your district to elect moderate legislators. You know, you might want that. That's probably going to lead to sort of a screwy-looking district, because you're going to be trying to do whatever you can to get an even number of Bs and Rs and unaffiliated. But some people want that. Some people would consider that a traditional districting principle, as opposed to just compactus and contiguous. So there is sometimes tension among these principles, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. So this is what our House districts look like right now, our state House districts. And then the Senate districts, as you know, are a composite of two of these. And then, you know, there's Eugene. For Portland, you have to zoom in, obviously, due to the population density. And so this is all the result of complying with that equal population mandate for one person, one vote. Who draws the state legislative and congressional districts? In most states, it's elected officials, i.e. politicians. And so some people view that as a conflict of interest because state legislators draw the very districts in which they will run. And then state legislators also draw congressional districts. Congressmen, congresswomen don't draw those. But in some states, as we're seeing more of, and maybe we'll see it in Oregon, there's an effort to put this on the ballot from the League of Women Voters, there are independent or bipartisan, or sometimes they're called nonpartisan commissions, who either have the sole authority to draw districts, and actually, a case went to the U.S. Supreme Court about that, and the court upheld the authority of the Arizona Redistricting Commission to draw Arizona's congressional districts, only five to four, by the way, but they have held it. And then there are others who advise. And there are all kinds of different schemes. Iowa, for instance, has nonpartisan staff draw up its state legislative congressional districts, and then it basically sends them to the legislature for an up or down vote. And they can reject them and send them back, but then it's the nonpartisan staff who work on them again. Other states like Wisconsin and, you know, Oregon traditionally, it's just a regular legislative committee. And then it goes to the floor of the House or the Senate, just like any old bill, and it comes out of that process.
And if you come to agreement in Oregon, the Secretary of State draws the districts.
Or jump into 2000.
Right, right. But eventually it goes to the Secretary of State here. Gerrymandering, it sounds like you're all familiar with that term. This is the required slide for any talk on gerrymandering, the original gerrymander. Looks like our other speakers here.
Looks like Houses 311.
At this juncture, might I, I'm sorry. Could I ask, could I ask what the League of Women Voters is advocating for in a statewide issue?
Independent commission. Independent council commission to redistrict.
Gotcha. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, an independent district. So this is, oops, this is Elbridge Gerry. Somehow the name for the term became gerrymandering, but that's how you pronounced his name, apparently, I've learned over the years, who was the original gerrymanderer for congressional seat in Massachusetts way back when, and the term has just stuck. So these are some of the seemingly obvious gerrymandering examples out of the post of 2010 redistricting cycle. And I say down below where they're from, the one at the top right is known as goofy kicking Donald Duck, and this one's called the praying mantis. And so most of these are thought to have been the result of a process that was designed to perhaps benefit one party over the other. Although, if you go back and look at, you know, some of the gerrymanders over time or alleged gerrymanders, sometimes they're done, like in many of the southern states, to create a majority-minority district. And so some of the southern states have said, we had to do this. We had to draw a district like this to comply with the Voting Rights Act so that not everyone in our congressional delegation will be white. We wanted to have a majority African-American district. And there's a lot of litigation about that. I'm not going to get into that in detail here. But I just want to caution that funny shapes don't necessarily mean a motive that we would all think was bad. It's just kind of simplistic, I think, a lot of times to say, funny shape, therefore bad, not always.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Which one of those is the North Carolina district where they, where they, where they put the district along a freeway? Is that North Carolina 12?
Let's see, that may be this one, NC 12, yeah.
And now, in the case of Oregon, where we have, we have minority communities, racial minority communities, but we don't have as much of a racial minority population as, say, New Jersey or Florida or North Carolina, is, of all of the reasons for why districts are created, it seems like the most egregious example where courts would intervene is where there's a racial component to the decision of the, of the districters or redistricters. Is that a fair statement? No, it's these other factors, like unless it's really outrageous, like a 20% variance in population, or, or, you know, that usually it's the concept of racially motivated to harm a racial minority.
Right.
That's where the courts would get involved. Otherwise, all these other phrases like "common interest" or even, even the word "equality", if it's mostly equal, courts will not get involved.
Yeah, I mostly agree with that. I guess one, one response is that that's where we've ended up. There was some time, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, where folks, litigants, different public interest groups thought maybe the Supreme Court would issue a decision limiting or prohibiting partisan gerrymandering, and the Supreme Court decided not to. But in that decision recently, they said, but we will still strike down racial gerrymandering. The other aspect is, you have to go back a ways for this. In the 90s, the U.S. Supreme Court actually struck down some majority-minority districts. There was a case Shaw v Reno in 1995, Janet Reno, former Attorney General out of North Carolina, where the Supreme Court said, even if you're trying to help a racial minority, a district that is too grotesque looking can violate the Constitution. And that's out of the line of jurisprudence of, you know, racial discrimination, any which way is wrong or illegal, and there's a lot of dispute about that, I recognize, but that's where Shaw v Reno came out of. But yeah, that's mostly the case, yes, the courts, the courts are more skeptical of racial gerrymanders. And so this is the case I mentioned or alluded to, Rucho versus Common Cause, just decided last summer, where the U.S. Supreme Court held that partisan gerrymandering claims are not justiciable. For the non-lawyers here, I know we have some lawyers, but not justiciable means the courts just won't hear them, and it's the federal courts won't hear them. They are so-called political questions, okay? And that was by only a vote of five to four, and the dissents were very vigorous, but that's where we stand right now. And so what that leaves is the door open for litigation under state constitutions, which we've seen a lot of, both before and after Rucho, and then also state constitutional and statutory reform, like the movement toward independent districts, district recommissions. So while a lot of folks were...
Excuse me just a second.
Yeah.
If you have a question, feel free to raise your hand, but I want to be able to give our speaker the respect for listening to his presentation.
Sorry, I was just sharing some racial data from our districts. Commissioner Bernie, I'll stop.
Well, while a lot of folks were sort of disheartened who are pushing for reform by this decision, Rucho versus Common Cause, you are seeing a lot of states pass ballot measures establishing independent districting commissions. Of course, you need the, the direct democracy in place to do that. Only about 20 out of 50 states have that. So if you're in a state that doesn't have direct democracy, and people are worried about a legislature that's keeping itself in power, it's kind of hard to get around that. But, you know, here in Oregon, if people are concerned, we have the ballot measure process that we all know so well. So how to cure partisan gerrymandering? Well, we have to decide what we care about the most, and I was talking about this earlier. Do we want equal representation of the parties, or at least do we want the parties to get an equal number of seats based on the percentage of statewide vote they win, often in case there is what political scientists call partisan asymmetry, meaning Democrats win 51% of the statewide vote for state House, but they only get like 40% of the seats, or vice versa? There's a lot of very sophisticated political science literature on this, and so some people may want districts that kind of move more toward that. Carolina, where the Supreme Court said, even if you're trying to help a racial minority, a, a district that is too grotesque looking can violate the Constitution. And that's out of the line of jurisprudence of, you know, racial discrimination, any which way is wrong or illegal. There's a lot of dispute about that, I recognize, but that's where Shaw v. Reno came out of. But, yeah, that's mostly the case, yes, the courts, the courts are more skeptical of racial gerrymanders. And so this is the case I mentioned, or alluded to, Rucho versus Common Cause, just decided last summer, where the US Supreme Court held that partisan gerrymandering claims are not justiciable. For the non-lawyers here, I know we have some lawyers, but not justiciable means the courts just won't hear them. At least the federal courts won't hear them. They are so-called political questions, okay? And that was by only a vote of five to four, and the dissents were very vigorous, but that's where we stand right now. And so what that leaves is the door open for litigation under state constitutions, which we've seen a lot of, both before and after Rucho. And then also state constitutional and statutory reform, like the movement toward independent districts, district re-commissions. So while a lot of folks were.
Excuse me just a second.
Yep.
If you have a question, feel free to raise your hand, but I want to be able to give our speaker the respect for listening to us.
So.
Sorry, I was just sharing some racial data from the part districts. Commissioner Byrne, I'll stop.
Well, while a lot of folks were sort of disheartened, who are pushing for reform by this decision, Rucho versus Common Cause, you are seeing a lot of states pass ballot measures establishing independent districting commissions. Of course, you need the, the direct democracy in place to do that. Only about 20 out of 50 states have that. So here in a state that doesn't have direct democracy, and people are worried about a legislature that's keeping itself in power, it's kind of hard to get around that. But, you know, here in Oregon, if people are concerned, we have the ballot measure process that we all know so well. So, how to cure partisan gerrymandering? Well, we have to decide what we care about the most, and I was talking about this earlier. Do we want equal representation of the parties, or at least do we want the parties to get an equal number of seats based on the percentage of statewide vote they win? Often in cases, there is what political scientists call partisan asymmetry, meaning Democrats win 51% of the statewide vote for statehouse, but they only get like 40% of the seats, or vice versa. There's a lot of very sophisticated political science literature on this. And so some people may want districts that kind of move more toward that. Maybe you care about geography more, but that is sometimes in tension with this. Same thing with competitive. I was mentioning earlier, you could try to draw districts that have even numbers of voters, because you want, you know, hard fought races. But that means you may have to relax some of this. And then racial representation, if you want to have, you know, two congressmen who are African American, who are likely to be African American from Mississippi, you may have to draw some districts that don't look as compact as they would otherwise, because you're trying to kind of keep that population together, or majority together. So these goals are often in conflict with each other. And so, one thing I always say to folks who are more reform minded is, you know, you have to decide what your goals are. And two examples of that are California, apparently, in its redistricting commission, adopted about 10 years ago, really focused on keeping communities of interest together. But they have the top two primary system, or the jungle primary. And their idea was, we'll get competition when we get to the end, where we have two Democrats facing each other. Okay, so we're not so concerned about that final race being competitive. Whereas Arizona, when they adopted an independent redistricting commission, one of the goals the commission was given was, we want competitive partisan races. You know, we want fairly even numbers of Rs and Bs. That's very different from the track California took. So, so even among reformers, you know, you kind of have to figure out what you're aiming for. Local redistricting? Well, as we see here, like in Lane County, and the, I guess, just handful of other counties in Oregon that have districts, most don't, is my impression. We're talking about nonpartisan elections. Unlike legislatures, who aren't always subject to these, everything county commissions do when they redistrict, at least in Oregon, as I understand it, are subject to fairly strict open meeting laws.
Not here.
So that's one way in which maybe it's a little different from the legislative process. This slide I put on just for fun, or this quote, so I was reading an article about local redistricting, and I thought you guys might find this a little obnoxious. That's what the, these two professors say about local redistricting. And then, of course, the Voting Rights Act does apply at the local level. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act prohibits otherwise neutral voting systems that have discriminatory results. Where you see the most litigation about this in the last 20, 30 years, often in the South, but not exclusively, and it's usually lawsuits challenging at-large city council systems, sometimes county commission, but usually at-large, saying that, well, okay, maybe this is a 60-40 white-black town, and we have 10, yeah, 10 city councilors, and they're all elected at large, and they're all white. And so some of the lawsuits that have been successful under the Voting Rights Act at the local level have been on that basis, that, well, you know, if you have a 40% black community, they need to have the chance to elect somebody from their community. And so several of those suits have succeeded or settled, and led to the changing districts from at-large to district. Of course, here we are district anyway, so not something that applies in Lane County, but, yeah.
Couple of questions, Commissioner Farr and then Commissioner Byrne.
Actually, mine was just a general one, that maybe all you have is your opinion, and maybe you don't want to give that. This all seems Republican and Democrat. What about those Amangas who are non-affiliated? As a growing number of us?
Well, that is certainly, I guess I have a couple of responses to that. One is, if you're going to reform the system and have some kind of neutral commission, you know, what's the role for the unaffiliated voters? And that's a question to hear a lot, because a lot of these commissions traditionally were, you know, seven Dems, seven Rs, and a judge, or something. And I think we're seeing more discussion of, well, let's have a role for unaffiliated. But I think when you get back to concerns about, you know, partisan balance, this equal representation of parties, I think what, what folks are looking at there is just the results from the district. So you may have unaffiliated voters who often vote one way or the other.
So that they're kind of a non-entire, they likely will split, or the.
No, they likely vote one way or the other. Right, and so we can look at the macro data to get a sense of that. You know, that's a discussion I've seen, at least.
In the state, I only went up to one non-affiliated, and that was Bob Johnson, who served as a Democrat, non-affiliated, and as a Republican in the House. And you served as a father, we were in the Senate when Bobby was in the House.
Commissioner.
That exhausts my question.
Commissioner Byrne.
It doesn't fully exhaust it, because I'm going to pursue that a bit. All this, I find, and I'm prepared for you to tell me I'm wrong, but I find all the arguments discussed thus far somewhat weak. And, and it reminds me, 45 years ago, when I got my degrees in economics, they were saying, this doesn't work anymore. We don't know the new economic tools, but this is what we got. Phillips curve, opportunity cost, yeah, all that stuff. Now we live in an era where I believe there are more independent voters, not necessarily independent party, than either Republicans or Democrats. We seem to live in an era where the fringes of those two parties oftentimes define who candidates will be for partisan offices, whereas there is a middle. It seems like, and even there is the assumption that if you're black, you vote one way, and if you're white, you vote another. And so, please respond to that, unless it's academic, but it just seems so to me weak, these, these arguments or these kinds of considerations.
And let me just kind of figure out where you're coming from. They, they seem weak in response to something?
In response to the realities of the world that we live in today.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and what are you trying to get at? When you say they're weak, when you say you want something stronger to get at?
I don't have, unlike some commissioners, I don't have the answers to my questions. I just don't. I'm observing it, I'm asking if those observations are correct, and I guess if what I'm getting, what I would get at, if I were getting at something, is if these tools are incorrect to inform redistricting?
Yeah.
Why are we stuck with them?
Well, you know, I think the reality might be a little, I might disagree a little bit on how I would describe the reality.
Please.
And this goes back to my answer to Commissioner Farr's comment, which is, I think while we do have an increasing number of unaffiliated voters, I think a lot of them really do side one way or the other. There's actually just a really interesting, I could send this to you, really interesting piece in Politico, I think, about some political scientist somewhere who's kind of doing this cutting-edge work, that there is no such thing as a swing voter anymore. That swings in elections are all explained by who stays home and who shows up. It's not about people actually crossing their tickets, or, you know, the independent who votes this way this cycle, or this way another cycle. It's just about who shows up, who cycles. And I don't know how correct she is, but, you know, it's an interesting take. It's a little different from yours, while all these unaffiliateds are kind of, oh, they vote Republican or Democrat, and they split the ticket, and so I think we're still trying to figure out what the reality is. I think we know that we do have more and more, at least when we get to partisan races, not as much for nonpartisan, a geographically divided electorate. In many states, certainly in Oregon, but even more so in, you know, Wisconsin, or Ohio, or Michigan, where you have the cities who tend to vote Democratic, and the rural areas who tend to vote Republican, and then the suburbs and exurbs are kind of somewhere in between. And I think what some of these, at least, reform efforts are trying to get at is, well, are we happy with what that produces? You know, it produces people from the rural areas who are on the fringe of maybe the Republican Party, and it produces people from the cities who are, what some would say, on the fringe of the Democratic Party. If we want people more in the middle, how do we get there?
I'm sorry. It sounds to me as if another reform effort is who decides?
Exactly, yeah, yeah, who decides? And I'm just saying, as part of that effort of who decides, we have to decide what criteria we want them to apply. What's more important? Is our competitive elections more important than kind of having an accurate reflection of a particular community? Because there may be tension between them.
Thank you.
So, let's see.
Commissioner Sorenson, that's one more question.
Could I just ask you a question about the, the request that's been made to me? And that is that, and I'm not going to be here when the Board of Commissioners, or whoever decides the districts for the next round, because I'm, I'm not running for reelection, so my term is running out. But I've been asked by people in my district, is it permissible for the Board of Commissioners to rebalance what some have alleged was a gerrymandering when the board last did this, and rebalance it by means of not a partisan balance, because this, these are nonpartisan offices, but by an interest, a concern that the interests have been so defined by the current districting, namely, that there was a packing of the progressive vote in Lane County in my district, and that meant that the other districts had fewer progressive voters, and that influenced the way the Board of Commissioners operated over the ensuing 10 years. And they want to know, given all of this litigation that goes on over, over, what are the motives of redistricting? Could the so-called progressive, or conservative, or progressive regressive, or progressive-not-progressive constituencies be more fully balanced in the next redistricting? Is that something that's, that in your view would, would be proper?
Oh, I think it's certainly among the legitimate options. If what you want is, and we'll take party labels away, but talk about just ideology, and let's say we could slap an ideological label on voters. If you want.
Maybe not on individual voters, as Commissioner Byrne pointed out, but on groups.
On groups, yes, exactly. I think that there's certainly a legitimate argument that you want to spread progressive voters around, rather than not have them all bunched in one district.
Well, my mother and I thought it was a fine idea to have the progressive voters in my district, because it happened to match my political outlook.
So there's a great book on this that I'd recommend to all of you, but especially in response to this question, called Why Cities Lose, by a political scientist at Stanford named Jonathan Rodden. And he's done all this sophisticated analysis around the world, looking at other democracies like Australia, the UK, and then he especially hones in on the US, and particularly Pennsylvania. And his argument is, progressive voters tend to bunch up geographically in places like Eugene, or in other kind of bigger cities. And because we use compact, contiguous districting, for the most part, in the USA, because they use that in England and Australia, progressives, progressive candidates tend to translate their votes into fewer seats. That's why his title is Why Cities Lose. So he thinks if you're concerned about that, you should want a proportional representation system.
What's his name?
Jonathan Rodden, R-O-D-D-E-N.
And, and just to be clear, that's not within our current power in the Board of Commissioners required to redistrict the five districts every, at least once every 10 years.
Yeah, as I read it, and, and I'd have to go look at this law that Kate Brown sent as Secretary of State, but certainly not within your county charter. You couldn't do it without revising the charter. Which I assume takes at least a few years as a process.
Voters have to approve.
Exactly, yeah, voters have to approve the county charter. So I took a look at your charter, just briefly, in preparation for the talk, and obviously it's something your county councillor is not here, but would study and more.
It's neither commissioner, one of our, we're all.
The county councillor is a commissioner?
No. He's our commissioner.
Oh, yeah.
No, no.
But, you know, I'd be curious to hear his or her views on this. Under the charter, which of course you're all familiar with, it's interesting to me that the charter actually says, we want districts that represent these areas. I mean, you could imagine a situation where this becomes woefully out of sync with the populations, right?
It is currently an issue.
It's currently an issue, great, okay. So that just stood out to me, looking at this thing for the first time ever, was, gee, this could be a tension, you know? What if there is not enough people in West Lane County, arguably just picking one, to, to create, you know, enough constituents for a district under one person, one vote? So that was interesting to me, that it not just established five, but said where they should represent.
Yeah.
It also, I thought this was interesting, it said the population densities of the districts must be reviewed at least every 10 years, instead of the population. You thought that was odd, too? Yeah, yeah, it really should just be the population, it's not the densities. I mean, you could get it, population through density, but it seems like kind of a roundabout way. I don't know why that's in the charter, but somehow it got in there. Notice it says, at least every 10 years. You guys could redistrict, apparently, more if you want to. Every five years. I mean, the only examples I'm aware of of that have been partisan, like in Texas in the mid 2000s, when the Republicans took over the state legislature, they redistricted again, because they had control of it, and the Democrats left the state, all that. But I'm not aware of kind of like less partisan examples of that, but you could, under this, as I read it, at least every 10 years. This is more of a matter of state and local government law, but you are a home rule county. There is some case law from the Oregon Supreme Courts that home rule cities have kind of extra protection of the Oregon Constitution. That's why, I know we have at least one lawyer here, Commissioner Sorenson would appreciate the CF site. You know, this is a city case, but other cases have interpreted home rule counties to probably have the same powers as home rule cities. We've never gotten a clear decision from the Oregon Supreme Court on that. But given that, you know, I say it's likely Lane County has more control over its districting process than a statutory county would. But I, as I read your charter, you're not doing anything radical, or out of line with Oregon or federal law. So, thank you, Jeff, for adding the slide. These are your current districts, which you're all familiar with, of course. And I suppose they comport with this requirement of the charter, that you have West Lane, sort of, okay, West Lane, Springfield, South Eugene, North Eugene, and East Lane. So these are some issues to consider as you embark on this process. Of course, population equality, I was talking to Commissioner Sorenson about this earlier. What kind of deviation is allowed, under federal constitutional law at least? Most people think you can go up to 10%. The Supreme Court has allowed that, at least in a state legislative case. No case involving a county commissioner or a city council has reached the Supreme Court, but folks in this area kind of take that to mean you have up to 10% legal room. There is another case that went as far as 16.6%, but the state legislature needed a justification, and the justification there was following local boundaries. Okay, so as high as 16.6% deviation has been allowed by the US Supreme Court. Now, you may want to just keep it equal anyway, but it looks like up to 10% is what current precedent allows. Here's a question, if we really want to open a Pandora's Box or a can of worms. This whole time I've been talking about one person, one vote, population. What do we mean by person? Huge question. Okay, does a person include a child who can't vote? Does it include a noncitizen who can't vote? Few jurisdictions allow noncitizens, but most don't. You know, does it include military personnel, prisoners? That's been an issue, okay. Most governments, Charles is going to talk more about the census data, most governments just use residents? There's been a movement in the last five, 10 years by some folks, usually more affiliated with the Republican Party, usually what you would call conservative, to use C-VAP, Citizens of Voting Age Population. Okay, and in fact, someone brought a, and I put the VAP in there, just voting age population, but that would include noncitizens, that's another option. But somebody brought a case against a Texas city council district, saying, you use residents, I'm a citizen. And, you know, my district has way more C-VAPS in it, citizens of voting age population, than the Latino district over here that has more immigrants who aren't citizens. So my vote as a C-VAP is being diluted. That's unconstitutional. Okay, in that case, went to the US Supreme Court, evenwell, is the name, E-V-E-F-W-E-L. And the US Supreme Court, in a very kind of perfunctory opinion, just said, no, it's okay if the state just wants to use total residents. But it didn't rule out that using C-VAP might be okay. So, you know, the way a lot of changes tend to work in the law is through camel's nose under the tent. Some people think that the reason why the current administration. camel's nose under the tent. Um, some people think that the reason why the current administration wanted to put the citizenship question on the census was to get CVAP data, so that state legislatures that want to use CVAP could say, aha, 2021, now we're going to do our state legislative seats based on CVAP, not based on residents. No state does that that I'm aware of currently, but it's being talked about more.
Commissioner Bernie, then Commissioner Sont.
So, um, at this point in time, without that question, I presume the census data does not make that distinction consequently.
Uh, you know, Charles will probably talk about this more, or do you want to?
I might as well talk about it now, because it's not in the presentation, but yeah, when the redistricting data comes out, you'll get the total population at the block level and the 18 and over population at the block level. So VAP is available, but uh Professor Diller is correct, they would have had to put a citizenship question on the census in order to get that CVAP at the block level. There are estimates of it at the block group or census tract level, come from the American Community Survey, because that survey, which replaced the long form of the census, does ask about citizenship. And so there is a, there's a line in the, in the tables of citizen voting age population at larger geographic areas.
So, thank you. So if, but at this point in time, since the census measures everybody, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we're at this point in time, looking at district boundaries by that measurement, all this is somewhat speculative.
Yes, it's purely hypothetical, just to show you the issues that one could consider.
Thank you. Although the state of Alabama was suing the Department of Commerce uh just recently, trying to get citizenship data, uh, for that reason.
For districting?
Yeah. Well, they, I didn't read the whole.
Alabama, I can't imagine.
Yeah, the state of Alabama was bringing suit. At the same time, the state of New York was suing to keep citizenship off.
Right.
The state of Alabama was suing to, to keep, to put citizenship on.
Commissioner Sont.
Um, with regard to the population data that the Board of Commissioners would be using for determining relatively equal population of the five districts, would we be allowed to use the basic population data that the census provides to us in December of 2020? In other words, not, not uh foreigners, not uh, not taking out people that the census doesn't count. In other words.
Certainly, so.
Even though children can't vote.
Yeah.
Or foreigners can't vote, they are still being counted, as I understand it, in the census.
Oh, yeah, and, and.
And then could we use that, or do we have to use registered voters?
No, no.
Or voters, or people who could be voters if they wanted to be voters?
Right, yeah, no, so, so what even well established or made clear was that it's perfectly fine for any jurisdiction to just use the total residents they get from the census.
The total enumerated persons?
Persons as persons, yeah, not excluding anybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it didn't rule out states doing what maybe Alabama's thinking about, which.
As far as I know, we have always, and I've been involved in three redistrictings at this level.
Yeah.
Um, first as a member of the advisory committee to the board, and then later on the board, and in those, we always use just the census data. We didn't try to cherry pick which type of data, like children would be excluded or whatever.
Right, and in fact, you know, interestingly, uh, the defendant in the even well case was Greg Abbott, governor of Texas. Um, and he defended, and Texas defended its use of total residents on the basis of administrative ease. These are the numbers you get from the census, it's going to take hard, you know, it'd be a lot harder for us to kind of try to pick out CVAP.
That was silly, my point.
So the Supreme Court said, sure, that's fine, just use residents. Um, so uh process, uh, you know, I haven't been around here for the previous cycles, I'm, just, just some ideas I've come across as far as processes uh that any uh county commission could consider. Um, presumably it's too late to establish a commission, either advisory or autonomous, but some local governments have done that. Um, San Francisco, San Diego, and New York, for instance, New York City have used um autonomous commissions that had uh kind of like California or Arizona with state legislatures, these are commissions that had the total authority to draw the boundaries for city council districts, and took it completely out of the city council's hands. Um, I read a review uh of that where um uh the professors who reviewed this uh thought that it had mixed results. They thought in some ways it actually magnified the um input of the well organized groups who, who could show up at all those commission hearings, because certain neighborhoods would show up at every single hearing and kind of get more say in the process. Um, so, so these folks at least had kind of mixed views on that. Um, obviously, you likely want any process to be inclusionary, um, you know, open to the public. Um, if you do use a commission, you get into the whole question of how do you select them? Even if they're advisory, you know, are they appointed by you, or are they separately elected, or, you know, that's.
That is also a question we have currently.
Okay, yeah, that's a big part of the debate at the state level, um, that I think is just starting to filter down to the local level, as local governments start to think um uh more and more about this. Um, now, the goals, as I see it, the goals that, that um you uh as a commission have to consider are largely dictated by your charter, which lay out, you know, where these districts roughly have to represent. Um, uh, and then another thing that I would imagine needs to be considered during the process are any Voting Rights Act implications. I'm not familiar enough with the demographics here, um, but, you know, you could imagine a scenario where you have five districts, and where they meet is right in the middle of the Latino community. And so if the districts were drawn differently, maybe you'd have a Latino majority district, but because they all meet right in the middle, you've divided that community in five. You, you could imagine that, I'm not saying that's what you have here. Um, and then you might run into a Voting Rights Act problem. Um, that's obviously the kind of thing your county council would have to look at. Um, uh, and those are kind, the kinds of concerns that are often raised ahead of time. You know, hey, we're a community here, Asian, African-American, whatever, we, we need to have the ability to elect a member of our community. Um, so that's something else to think about during the, the process. So I had a little further reading here I'd recommend. There's not a lot out there in the academic literature, but there's a little bit on um local districting. There's so much about congressional and state legislative, especially about congressional, but there's a little bit uh out there on, on the local process that uh I, I recommend to you for, for further reading. So, at that, I'll stop. Happy to answer questions and uh appreciate being here. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is also.
Commissioner Sont, then Commissioner Far.
Um, the, and I'm, I'm not uh entirely sure on this, but my understanding is the Land County Charter gives the uh Land County Board of Commissioners the responsibility to do the redistricting. Uh, there are people out in the community that have suggested, well, the commissioners, what, what did the nice law review say? They were less sophisticated than higher office holders. Um, not really sure that's true, but I guess that is someone's.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right, that might be someone else's opinion, but anyway. Uh, assuming that we wanted to move to a different type of districting or redistricting, do you have a recommendation on a fair way of having a group of people do that other than the officials who reside in the districts that are being potentially manipulated?
Sure. Um, I, I don't have a, a, a recommendation I've thought through very carefully. Um, I would think uh you want to be very sensitive about how you appoint people. Um, and, um, you know, like I know in California, they have people apply, uh, and they make it very clear that there's an application process. Um, they uh, they have some process that has different firewalls, like to try to prohibit partisan influence, um, where, you know, they select some people, and those people select others, and just kind of like multiple stages, so that it's not just legislators picking their friends or, you know, party affiliates. Um, but so you, you'd certainly want to have it be well advertised, inclusive, um, and then uh I, I guess you'd want to think a little bit about whether you care about partisanship. Um, do, do you want to have a guarantee that, you know, no party can have more people on that commission than the other? Uh, or do you say, we're nonpartisan, we don't care? You know, I don't know, I'm not steeped in the, the politics here. Um, but when it comes to the commissions that have been given authority to redistrict, uh state legislative chambers or Congress, they've, most of them are very careful about even partisan arrangements.
Commissioner Far.
Thank you. You know, can I spend a full day listening to you?
If you listen.
Absolutely fascinating, but it, uh, you know, based on my experience, I'm going to make a motion. I move that Kelly Osbourne, excuse the target, to draw the lines. Little Jack said that, no.
I'm not sure if she wants that.
Seems to have died for lack of a second.
So the, uh, interestingly, um, you know, what happened in Eugene in 2000 is a great example of uh formerly badly, uh, the, the city had grown weirdly around the lines, and I don't know that Land, that Land County's grown weirdly around the lines, other than probably more of a dense population in the Papule area. So I think, um, my personal feeling on this is uh make it as easy and innocuous as possible, and I, I would personally love to see like maybe five judges do everything and, and just hand it to us autonomously. Um, so the, the, the question of an autonomous committee is, is a question that I have. Do you have any experience with that? Have you seen that actually personally?
No, I, I don't have any personal experience, you know, having lived here in Oregon, we don't really have that.
Yeah.
But I know that um, uh, California and Arizona would be the, the state level commission that got the most attention, the most media attention. Um, and in Arizona, it's also been fairly acrimonious. Um, and, uh, you know, the governor didn't like what they were doing, so he tried to cut their budget, and they sued to get their budget back, you know, so once you establish it, it's not always hunky dory. Um, but uh, what I'm not familiar with, and, and, and this has kind of piqued my interest in looking into it further, is how it was done locally in New York, San Francisco, and San Diego. You know, I'm, I'm curious what exactly their processes were. I'd say if you're interested, I'd look up on what other, what those cities have done. I guess San Francisco's also a county, actually, so see how they did it.
Uh, it's probably not going to happen here. You know, I, I'll say this, that my son has a PhD in political theory.
Oh.
From University of Virginia, and I love debating political theory. The difference, talking with you, is that sometimes when you're talking, I get to talk too.
Different between a PhD and a JD, I guess.
Because of the watch.
PhD.
Commissioner Bernie, do you have something?
Thank you.
Please.
Another question?
No.
Nope, I think we're good.
Other than thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you. Well, I, I don't have a PhD, but I have been working with census data professionally for 35 years, so I, I, I know that the topic today is redistricting, and there's some of that in here, but there's also a little bit about the 2020 census in general, you know, my expertise, and uh hopefully material that will interest you. Uh, as I mentioned, there's no more long form, you know, we use the American Community Survey for those social and socioeconomic questions. People still ask us questions like, what was the uh median household income in the 2010 census? Well, there was no, there was no long form, there was no income question on the 2010 census, that comes from the American Community Survey. And we could spend all day talking about the American Community Survey, but there's only, the last time around, uh, in 2010, the Census Bureau liked to brag that there were only 10 questions on the census. It's equivalent to what we used to call the short form, and that's still true. Uh, I don't know if it's 10, because there's other questions about what's your phone number, you know, for follow-up, but there's really only uh, you know, six or seven substantial demographic questions, age, sex, race, and uh relationship. That is, they don't ask you if you're married, but they, uh, whoever puts themselves down in person, one, in the first column is the householder. I mean, years ago, they used to say head of household, but the how, somebody has to put themselves down in the first column. So there, anytime you see data about, you know, uh, African-American house, you know, households, it's not really the household, it's households with an African-American householder, person who put themselves in the first column. Same with age, you know, households with a, a householder 65 and over. And then everybody else in the census is uh, there's a question about relationship. How is this person related to person one? So again, they're not really asking if you're married, but perhaps person two is a spouse of person one, and that's how they derive data about, for example, married uh couple families. They also ask if your home is under rented.
Domestic violence situation.
Uh, so that's valuable information. They also get, you know, whether the home is occupied or not. Uh, and there's some confusion there too, because they can only count everybody in, once, in one place. So the vacancy, when you see a vacancy rate from the census, it tends to look a lot higher than what a real estate agent might tell you the vacancy rate is, because vacant includes seasonals, it includes turnover, you know, there may be a unit in a, in apartment building that's already been rented, but people have moved in yet. It includes uh, you know, hous- housing units that may be currently unlivable. Uh, so it's a, you know, vacancy rate is something we derive from there. And, you know, again, we could talk more about the ACS, but I'm going to talk about 2020, and this is the way they used to do things in the 1960s, geographer at the Census Bureau using a magnifying glass and a, and ruler laying on a map. Uh, so after the 2010 census, you know, there's only 435 seats in Congress, so uh that's not changing, and hasn't changed in about 100 years. So every year, every 10 years, there's winners and losers. Uh, the, our neighbors to the north in Washington gained a seat after the 2010 census, and uh California for the first time ever didn't uh change. Uh, and then those states around the Great Lakes and uh plus Louisiana and Upper Midwest lost, lost seats. The green states lost Ohio, New York, lost two, Texas gained four, and Florida gained two. So because Oregon didn't quite uh make it to get a, an, a new extra seat, we, we thought we were on track, but then when the recession hit and our in-migration slowed down, we, we didn't quite, we were fell short by about 40,000 people in 2010 of getting that sixth seat. So currently, I each, each representative in Oregon represents about 100,000 more people than the average nationwide. And good news is we are expected to get that sixth seat after the 2020 census. Uh, these are, after the Census Bureau came out with their 2019 population estimates, this uh organization, Election Data Services, made this map showing, uh, basically if, if they reap a portion based on the 2019 estimates, this is, these are the winners and losers. And even California, California has not grown as fast as the US, so they're likely to lose a seat. Uh, Minnesota is fighting hard to count everybody, but they may lose a seat. Texas, again, is going to gain multiple seats. Then they did a different scenario. If, based on the, the change between the 2018 and 2019 population estimates, that rate of growth, if that were to continue for another nine months from July 2019 through April 2020, a slightly different scenario, Texas would gain yet another seat, and Alabama would lose one. Uh, another reason Alabama was interested in uh not counting citizens, because their uh noncitizen population is about 4% or 5% versus, I think, over 12% for the nation. So if, if, if apportionment were based on, on citizenship, much less redistricting, uh, this map would look different. So let's, let's uh prognosticate about what's going to happen in, in Oregon. Fun stuff. So we're, we're almost at Census Day, and we think the population of Oregon on Census Day, April 1st, might be about four, less than 4.3 million. Divided that by six seats in Congress, and each representative would be representing about 711,000 people. Uh, and. So these are current districts. And again, stop me if, if you have questions. But each, based on the 2018 estimates, every one of Oregon's five districts is above that 711,000 threshold. Therefore, every one of them will have to shrink.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Somebody asked me when I was talking about this, referring to your slide, they said, where is that new district gonna go? From this, you can see, it could go anywhere, right?
Right, but my best guess, and of course I have no control over it, it's up to the legislature, it may be in the mid, well, in the valley. Because the two fastest-growing districts are the, are one and three up in the Portland area. So together, you know, they have about 30, they'll have close to 300,000 more people than two districts should have. Therefore, they'll have to lose probably from the south end. You know, they'll, they may have to lose their Clackamas and Yamhill County portions. Again, just speculating. And, and then District Two is quite awkward, because it's got all of the 18 counties east of the mountains, plus Jackson County, Medford, plus Grants Pass in Josephine County. So that part, if it ends up being about 140,000, 130, 40,000 above the target, would they have to lose all of Grants Pass and part of Jackson County? And then there would be that handful of people in Jackson County that have a rep from east of the mountains. Walden is retiring, so Hood River County may be in play for redistricting. Now, I guess there's no rule that says you can't district a congressperson out of their district, but it would be kind of rude. So, so, you know, Hood River, some people have speculated that Hood River doesn't have to be in, but, but that's only about 25,000 people. So there's gonna have to be some more awkwardness to District Two. Eastern Oregon is by itself, is not gonna be one-sixth of the state.
Commissioner Johnson?
If the boundary between the fourth district and the second district were changed in southern Oregon to put more of, maybe all of Josephine County and some of, of, of Jackson County into the second district, would that bring the second district populate, without changing any of the northern or eastern or central boundaries of the, of the fifth dis, second district, would that be a way to equalize the, the six districts?
Yeah, it would. And, and if that were to happen though, then the fourth district would have to receive.
Would lose its mid-Lamont Valley populations of Lynn and Benton Counties to create or help create the necessary people for a sixth district if the third district and first districts were, were moved northward?
Right, exactly. So there would be a big swath of everything north of Eugene and south of Portland. That would be big enough for two districts.
Has the fifth district grown as fast as the first and third districts?
Well, according to these estimates, it's grown as fast as the third. These were actually within one person of each other after the 20, based on the 2010 census. They didn't go for 9.9%, they went for 0.0001% when the legislature redrew these five congressional districts.
Is, is your part of Portland State University available to work with the legislature or units of government such as Lane County Government to help them draw fair districts?
Yeah, actually, we worked with a lot of jurisdictions after 2010, including Washington County, which had not changed districts for a long time, and they had, they wanted to keep cities together. So they were really out of proportion. You know, Beaverton and Hillsborough each are more than, each one of them is more than one-fifth of the county. So they were well, well out of proportion, and we, we helped them redraw their boundaries. We worked with cities such as Pendleton and a lot of community college and, and school, school districts. And we didn't work with the legislature, except for some early, something similar to what we're doing right now. You know, just talking with the Rules Committee before the, the census results came out. The legislature plans to hire a GIS analyst to, you know, help them, and probably some consultants, you know, to, to show them scenarios. So, but again, this is all speculation. They could do things completely differently if they want. Whoops. So here within Lane County, you know, how much of the state's population do, does Lane County represent? In the 2010 census, it was a little over 9%. So I multiplied it by 60 and 30. This is how many seats you should have in the House and Senate. Five and a half and, in the House. And Lane County has grown a little bit more slowly than the state in the, in the last 10 years. But Lane County is still somewhere between 8.8 and 9.1% of state population. So there will be, you know, House and Senate districts redrawn, but I don't think you'll have a perceptible loss of representation, a quarter of a seat in the House perhaps. And City of Eugene has continued to grow at a faster rate than the county. And putting the, the description of two seats in Eugene, I just looked at our, our estimates for the urban growth boundary of Eugene. It represents 53% of the county. And of course, that's a little bit more than the city, representing, you know, including places like Santa Clara and River Road that are not in the city. But urban growth boundary is about, Eugene, UGB is about 53%. Springfield, UGB is about 19%. So that is one-fifth, yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Just want to ask about your 53% number for the City of Eugene. Is that, that's the urban growth boundary of Eugene, not the urban growth boundary of Springfield?
Right, right.
And then, so just as a, as, as, as has been noted earlier, the people who were drafting our charter that was approved by the voters in 1976 used the terms North Eugene and South Eugene. But it sounds like we couldn't actually put the South Eugene and North Eugene districts into that urban growth boundary, because that'd be 53% of the whole county. And we can only have 40% in those two seats.
Yeah, and I noticed the.
So 10% or 13% of that urban growth boundary population has to go into the other three districts. Or one of, or two of, or three of the other three districts.
Yeah, and I think your county map already shows that, that you're already, there's some portion of Eugene that's, that's in a third, you know, there are three districts that include some portion of the City of Eugene.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
And Springfield was 18% usually?
19%. Including its, I don't, I guess the, drawing a blank on the little neighborhood between.
Glenwood.
Glenwood, yeah, that, I think that's in the, within the Springfield, UGB.
So that's inside of the 19%?
Yeah. So, again, not related to redistricting, but, you know, why is the census important? Well, this professor at George Washington University has calculated that Oregon got 13, over $13.4 billion from 55 big federal programs in the year 2016 that are, as he's put it, guided by census data. So some of them have different formulas, it's not strictly census data. There's other factors involved in some of the formulas. But Medicaid is the biggest one, about $6.7 million. And again, four or five years ago, fiscal year 2016, his, his research team actually broke down.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Is that 6.7 million or billion?
Billion, billion. Yeah, Oregon got $6.7 billion for Medicaid in fiscal year 2016. So, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry. That, that's formulaic then, that, you know, okay.
Yeah, there, this is a really interesting website. In fact, there, I, I don't know if the links will work from the PDF that's on your board agenda, but there, if you get a copy of the original PowerPoint, there's a lot of links in here that, so you can look at, at these sites. And there's a lot more information there, including, his team actually broke it down by county from, from a few of the biggest programs that, for which they could do that. And Title I grants to local education agencies. Looks like Lane County got a little bit more than its 9.1, 9.2% share of the state total of state population. Community Development Block grants and workforce allocations. These are the funds that were guided by population counts. So very important. I'm sure you, you have a complete count committee that's getting the, the count as complete as possible.
We just had a presentation on that yesterday. Commissioner Bernie, did you have a question?
Yeah. In that you're mentioning the count, I'm sorry to be picky, but it looks like it's 13 and a half trillion, not billion, that came to Oregon. Is that correct?
I don't think there's.
Billion.
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 Yes, it's a.
No, you're right, okay.
Yeah, and this pie was.
Because then I was adding this up, and it adds up to more.
This pie nationally, nationally was 675 billion.
Thank you.
But, but now he's come out with more research, counting not 55 programs, but 316 programs with about $1.4 trillion of federal money that's distributed, guided by census data. And he hasn't yet broken it out by state. But we, we, little note up there in the upper right-hand corner, we divided this 13.4 billion by Oregon's population in 2016, and it's more than $3,200 per person. So you can't quite say that each person not counted would cost us $3,200, because the formulas are complicated. But people like to make that claim, it's, it's roughly in that order. More than 30, I think we can say more than $3,200 for every person missed that Oregon would lose out on. So, pardon my, whenever I talk about the census, I talk about what's changing. Of course, this is gonna be the first time that you can report on the internet, and Census Bureau really wants you to do that, save them money. But you can also report traditionally by paper and by telephone. Maybe you heard all this in your complete count committee presentation. And, but the, there are minor changes to race and ethnicity questions, and minor changes, some changes to the relationship question. And something that concerns all of us data people is something called differential privacy. And I've got a slide on each one of those. There's a great map out already showing which census tracts will get the internet first. In other words, you get a card in the mail, and it tells you to go on the internet. If you don't do that, after getting a couple more cards, they'll send you a paper form. So that's almost three-quarters of the state's households that will get a card in English telling you to go on, on the internet. Another 5.7% will get a card in English and Spanish, depending on what census tract they live in, telling them to go on the internet. And then those green ones, internet choice, they'll get the paper form first, but they still have the choice to go on the internet. And you can zoom in on this map if you fire off this link and see exactly, you know, your neighborhood, and streets will pop up, and you'll know what kind of census tract you're in. There's some yellow areas there too, like the Warm Springs Reservation, and some really rural areas where they, they will actually come to your door first and hang a questionnaire there. I don't think there's any in Lane County, but these are areas where there's lots of post office boxes or people who don't have addresses that they can mail to.
Question.
Who made this determination and on what basis?
The Census Bureau, based on broadband access and American Community Survey data, there, there's a question about broadband access on there. They may have worked with local telecom providers. But, you know, my father's 97 years old. He lives in a very sophisticated, well-connected census tract. I don't think he's gonna respond by internet, but he, he will. I can help him, I guess. Or he can wait for the paper form. It, it'll be interesting to see what happens. There's some concern about this, of course, but there's also, there were also people 10 years ago saying, why, why don't you give us a chance to do it on the internet? Because that's how we do everything, mostly people under 40. So here's changes to the question that I mentioned. On the left, the, the two-part question. First, is this person Hispanic, Latino? And then what's the person's race? That hierarchy hasn't changed. Census Bureau actually proposed to merge these into one question and to add a Middle Eastern and North African category. And they sent that proposal, of course, they studied it for years, tested it, and had stakeholder groups advising them. They sent that proposal to Office of Management and Budget, but OMB ignored it and focused on adding the citizenship question. OMB is part of the executive branch. So they didn't get the changes they wanted to the race question. They're still using the 1997 OMB directive, which lays it out like this. There are some subtle changes though, crossing out the word negro from black and African-American, crossing out the word Guamanian from Chamorro. And then adding write-in categories. It's always been the case, or for a while it's been the case, if you're Asian or American Indian or Latino, you can write something very specific in those boxes. But for whites and blacks, it was just white or black. But there's a lot of interest in Afro-Caribbean populations, African immigrants, Slavic populations. And I don't know if we're gonna get the good data that we, that will help us parcel that out from basically the way that people write stuff in, but there will be, and it won't be available at a very detailed geographic level. But certainly by state or maybe even county, we should be able to see stats like, how many people said they were Lebanese, for example, under the white box. So changes to the relationship question. How is this person related to person one? There are now categories of opposite sex spouse and opposite sex unmarried partner, same-sex spouse, same-sex unmarried partner, rather than just imputing that from the gender question. And then rumor or border, kind of old-fashioned terms, have been deleted. And, but roommate or housemate is still there. And fortunately, they added foster child. And you probably have heard from your complete count committee folks that children are, are some, among the biggest group of people missed in the census. Lots of children are missed in the census. So I think adding foster child is a great addition, because people may not be sure whether they need to count their foster child. I'm not gonna read all this, but differential privacy, Census Bureau is concerned about people being identified. Their Title Thirteen says that they can't identify any individuals in the census. But now that there's all this big data that you can purchase and run through your computer at, you know, billions of bytes per se, per millisecond, they've figured out that you could actually match up some of the, the data that's out there with, the published data from the census. They publish so many tables that if, if you, with, with high, high-power computing and integrating other sources, they determine that you could identify many people from the census. And they've always done, they've always had some, some noise in the census. For example, they swap people from one block to another. I live on a block with only ten homes on it, and I know I filled out my own census form, but I can tell that my household is not represented on my block, based on the race, age, and sex characteristics of my household. And, but there are other households that are reported on my block that probably don't live on my block. So they, in order to keep people from being identified, they've been swapping them. But they've determined now that doesn't go far enough. So they're actually going to be adding more noise, doing things like changing people's ages and so that they can't be linked with other databases. It's a big concern for us data folks, and we're pushing back on it.
Do you like accuracy?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we need denominators for our fertility rates and mortality rates and migration rates. So if we don't get people the right age, then we won't be able to calculate good rates. So there's hard to count, link to the, the hard to count website that, that our center created, that's part of the Oregon twenty-twenty census website that the governor's office has put out. And more links, if you want to really learn about differential privacy. This YouTube video is the person who created the concept, and she explains it really well. And, oh, and the, the last link is something I just added. This just came out, and this compares the, the twenty-twenty census that was published, with, I mean, twenty-ten census data that was published, compared to the twenty-twenty, twenty-ten census data that would be published using the current rules for differential privacy. And it's really concerning, especially around things like vacancy rate. It's, it's like night and day. And here's the state's website, oregon2020census.gov, was just rolled out a few weeks ago. A couple of questions.
Commissioner Sorensen and Commissioner Bernie.
I wanted to ask a question about the, the estimates that Portland State puts out for the cities and counties in the state, and what you think of the idea of using those estimates from the, let's say, July one, twenty-twenty estimate, to begin the redistricting conversation earlier, so that the people could learn more about the population changes and the, and the, at least at that time, current data in, you know, potentially July, June, July, August, September, until the formal data is released, and that, that a greater period of time could ensue to, to, for, for the commissioners who are gonna have to make the decision, but also the public that's following it could be more engaged in it. How accurate are your numbers, the Portland State numbers, compared to the, and I, and I guess I'm asking you to project how accurate you think they'll be, but just historically, have they been accurate?
Well, not accurate enough to do what you'd like to do.
Not accurate?
Not accurate enough to, to do, I mean, in generality, I think you can say something like Eugene has been growing faster than the rest of Lane County. That's about it, you know, the.
Wouldn't we be able to take our twelve cities and compute the number of people at your estimate?
The other, the other problem, though, is we don't have detailed estimates for unincorporated areas. So the fact that, that Florence has X population, you know, we don't, that's not gonna really tell us anything about Western Lane County in general, because there's so much unincorporated population. And our, you know, that, given the fact that our estimates were based on the twenty-ten census, you know, incrementally, year by year, they do, you know, they will diverge from, from what comes out in twenty-twenty. And in fact, there's even disagreement, hate to bring it up, but, you know, disagreement between our, our annual estimates and the Census Bureau's annual estimates, and even our own population forecast program, you know, disagreements about what the, the twenty-eighteen population is, for example. So we'll, we'll, we'll re, we'll all reset after twenty-twenty. No estimate is, is perfect.
Commissioner Bernie.
You said as a data person, you're pushing back against what I think you call noise, which sounds to me like trying to protect people's privacy from data surveillance.
Well, yeah, Census Bureau is trying to protect people's privacy, and in the data user community is saying, well, what we've been doing is good enough. You know, I think you're interpreting Title Thirteen too strictly. There. So I, I think, I've heard that they're actually coming out, see, this, this comparison is with something they call a demonstration product, where they reran the twenty-ten census using differential privacy. And I think now that they've gotten feedback about how bad it is, they're changing, one of the things they brag about with their differential privacy is that you can set something, you know, you can measure the trade-off between perfect privacy, which would be not releasing any data at all, and, and perfect, uh, perfect data, which is releasing data on every individual. So there, there's a, a delta around there that they have to choose, and, and they may slide it a little bit away from privacy and toward better data.
No, I understand that. I, so the statement is a correct one, and, and it. Now you're talking about people's per, privacy and data that's commercialized, right, by other groups? And again, the noise ostensibly is to protect them. So I, I'm just saying, will people have a chance to weigh in on that? Or is this an internal discussion and debate?
It, it's the Census Bureau's decision to make. People, people like the Minnesota Population Center, which, which is a great site for publishing additional, pulling census data together. They have, they have, you know, been pushing back very vocally, as well as many other people have. The conferences on it, there's, there's a lot of pushback. And, and, you know, people are testing it and coming up with, with case studies of, you know, well, if, if you use these differential privacy, for, for example, most of the counties in Eastern Oregon have a zero percent vacancy rate in the differential privacy file. And in fact, they often, they had like a ten percent vacancy rate. You know, minority communities vastly different numbers in some cases, and it affects smaller cities a lot worse than, than bigger cities.
Gotcha.
So it's, it's a big concern. But we don't want to scare people from not doing the census. So that's, you know, that, I guess that the general public isn't gonna be too concerned about this when they fill out their census form, but I think it'll be a concern for planners and, you know, elected officials and anybody who, you know, community development people, not just demographers.
Any other questions?
I do have a question for our first speaker. You had mentioned when you were looking at, at our information for Lane County, that our districts were named by region.
Yeah.
And that was of particular interest to mine, because I am the big chunk on the right, which is East Lane, but I also include South Lane, or people who identify as South Lane. So I have delegated myself to calling it District Five. And it also includes North Lane, so. Right. And a portion of West Lane. So it's, it's this huge swath that, that, the name convention really doesn't encompass very well. And I was curious what the practice was that you may have encountered in places that have districts.
It's not something I've studied in depth, to the extent I'm familiar with it. Usually they're just numbers, you know, not necessarily identifying the numbers of a particular neighborhood or section of a city. I would say, I don't, I don't know what the Charter Committee was thinking back in nineteen seventy-six, or if there was much debate about this, but.
There was a reason they were, one, named and why they were chosen the way they were, which was to make sure there was at least two commissioners that came from outside the Eugene-Springfield metro area.
Yeah, and I, and I wonder if at the time, maybe that's when one person, one vote was still barely fresh, maybe, still being incorporated into the dialogue.
Well, when you have numbers, that can be very difficult for residents to conceptually understand, what number am I in?
Leading up to the Home Rule Charter, we had three commissioners under, you know, general governance, and all three were out of the city of Eugene at that time. That's why it was so specifically set up by geographic reasons, why they got named.
I guess the analogy I would make is in, you know, state legislature, you just give them a number in Congress. You know, and then whoever it is who gets elected from there, we say D Eugene or R Kaiser, you know, but we don't call Senate District Thirteen the Kaiser seat.
True.
It could be Kaiser, it could be Wilsonville, it could be Hillsborough.
Why does he show the North, well, I meant California district?
The, the longest-lasting approach, or the, the most durable approach is just to go with numbers. It may have less personality, you know, but it's, it's more durable.
Any other questions?
One point I wanted to.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen mentioned December thirty-first, and I wanted to just point out that the only thing we'll know on December thirty-first is the total population of Oregon. So we'll know how many, and every other state. So we'll know how many seats in Congress in each state we'll have, but the, the Census Bureau doesn't release the block-level file that you'll need for redistricting until later. The deadline for that is March thirty-first. Ten years ago, it came in about the third week of February. So they release it state-by-state on a rolling basis, and that's when you can hit the ground withdrawing your boundaries.
Commissioner Sorensen.
With regard to the release of the state-by-state populations in December of this year, do you believe that it'll be known, demographers will know to a reasonable pers, uh, cent, to a reasonable accuracy that, that Oregon will get a sixth district? Will know by then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. When do you think that actual date will come, or have you already?
December thirty.
Have you already come to that view yourself, studying it?
Well, having been around for lots of other censuses, it always comes on December thirty-first, not a day before.
But I mean, your opinion of whether Oregon is gonna get a sixth district?
Oh, yeah.
Is that like a hundred percent in your mind, or?
Ninety-nine point, ninety-nine of forty-four hundred percent.
And so based on, you're saying based on your current knowledge of the rest of the United States population changes, that you're reasonably confident?
Because Oregon's been growing faster than the US.
Uh-huh, okay.
Significantly.
Okay. And then back to my other question about the use of Portland State data currently. Do you believe that data is gonna be, in terms of the city population and the county population, do you think those are gonna be relatively accurate?
Well, I think the state population is gonna be very, very, very close. You know, I'd be disappointed if it was more than twenty thousand different. But, but cities and counties, they're gonna be different. Some will be too high, some will be too low.
Okay.
It's just an inexact science, since in this country, we don't require people to register when they move to a new city like they do in some countries, so.
Thank goodness.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll leave this presentation for, just for future reference. There's some other final slides in here showing, for example, age group change in Lane County, losing children, painting old people, and, and then households. There's actually fewer married couple households with children under eighteen now than there, than there have been in the last sixty years. And that shrunk from forty-nine percent of all households in nineteen sixty down to fifteen percent of Lane County households in twenty-ten.
Wow.
Number, share of living alone increased from thirteen percent in nineteen sixty up to twenty-nine percent in twenty-ten. So probably by now, close to one-third of all households in Lane County are single-person households.
Well, thank you both for coming down and speaking with us today.
Coming up.
Up the river?
Are you up the river? Are coming up the river, okay?
Down on the map.
And we just won't know what the numbers are locally until the numbers come out. That's pretty clear. So trying to figure out where our boundaries may or may not change before that time is, is just gonna be speculation. But I think we do still have a lot of conversation to be had regarding how we want to proceed with the redistricting. You know, what, what you looked over in our charter, in my personal opinion, is it doesn't really state how we're going to do that. And we should be discussing that further, so that we're ready and prepared. And if we want to make any changes, then we have public input to do so prior to actually redistricting in the future. Any other final comments?
Are you suggesting that we have another work session on this topic? And how would that, in your view, be structured?
I would like to see that, but not necessarily about trying to estimate the population boundary stuff, but talking more in-depth about how we want to move forward with the methodology of our redistricting. Commissioner Bozovic.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because I've, I've, you know, after the last round of redistricting, and as hard as you try to do everything according to the rules, you know, it still has the appearance of being self-serving for the, you know, whoever holds the majority of the board at the time. I would really like us to look into the possibility of, of thinking about putting a charter amendment out on the ballot to look at the possibility of having an independent commission do the redistricting, you know, whether it's, you know, retired judges or appointed by retired judges, like they do in some California counties. That, that has been fairly successful in resolving some of that, that concern.
Commissioner Bernie.
Did I hear one of you say it's too late to do that for this go-around? Because I also heard the lead women voters saying that that was something that they planned to put on a statewide ballot.
I may have said my guess is it would take longer than that.
For the state, we could refer one for the November ballot, and it'd be in place for our redistricting next year.
Okay, thanks.
No, I think, I think all that should be on the table for a future work session, how we wanna define it more specifically. I just think we, we need that definition, because right now, it basically just. right now, it basically just says, the five of us get to choose what it is, and that's kind of it. And...
Not the five of us.
Yeah. The five board, the five commissioners.
The five in office at the time.
Yes, because you won't be there. That's, yes.
We adopt the new boundaries by ordinance, and that's a majority vote.
Yep. And I know that there's the League and other, you know, public groups that would want to weigh in on this, and that we should, we should have that conversation with them as well. Commissioner Byrne?
I know this isn't the topic that you all came here to talk about, in terms of the political decision, right? But I think, yeah, I mean, sometimes optics become the problem. And so to the degree that we can mitigate that as an issue, I think that's healthy for our community.
Yeah. And frankly, it could be done at the state level, but it would take the legislature referring something to the ballot to get the timing to work. And I don't think this legislature has any desire to change the cities, change the system. They like controlling it. They like picking their own voters, which is basically what this requires, is elected officials to pick their voters.
Commissioner Byrne?
I would argue that any group that I've seen in the majority would like the decision to pick their voters. So I think the fact that we're having this discussion is just really good, sound, public policy discussion.
Yeah.
While our guests are here, could you, either one of you, give your view on what are some good local examples of having the redistricting decision at the city or county level be done by, other than the elected officials?
Well, the ones that are done, I think, were good examples, and we didn't get any complaints about them. But...
Well, what were they? What cities were they?
I mean, they were also proposals that the board or council had to adopt. So, you know, it was still up to the city council, or the board of directors, or whatever ruling body had the vote to adopt them. But in, you know, it's possible that we, us, or other agency could present one or more alternative boundaries. And I know in Pendleton, we had an issue with, there's a big prison there. And so if the, I wasn't actually involved in that project, so I don't know how it was adjudicated, but they, you know, the prison, if we would have not excluded the prison population, that would be basically like one block would be a council district. So that wouldn't work. But, you know, we have, we've done this after every census for several decades. And this has been, existed at P S U since 1965.
Well, what I was asking and drilling down on is not who would, would give us the options, but whether you're aware of, like, oh, in Pendleton, they had a redistricting commission, and it wasn't appointed by the, by the city council, or in Yumitala County, the Board of County Commissioners decided that they were going to have a redistricting commission, and it wasn't appointed by the Board of Commissioners, but it was something that had the exclusive authority to make the decision.
I'd be interested to know if there is any such arrangement anywhere in Oregon.
Could we appoint Professor Diller?
I'm not aware of any in Oregon. You did mention Washington County having to resize its districts.
Yeah, again, it was up to the county board, but I think they realized they, that was an interesting case.
And had no one sued as they became more and more out of compliance?
I don't think so. They may have just gotten vocal, you know, objections and suggestions from people that they ought to take up...
In our case, we have traditionally appointed a seven-member group, which got the title Lane County Redistricting Task Force. We've done that for the last four censuses that I'm aware of. And we put each of the five commissioners appoint one member to it, and then the board as a group appoints the other two. And these seven people work, when the census data comes out, they work for three or four months. And then, prior to the September deadline, which is six months before the next primary election, then the Board of Commissioners accepts, rejects, or modifies the recommendations of that seven-member group. Now, that's not, the seven-member group doesn't make the decision, but they typically will make three or four options for the governing board to adopt or otherwise recommend. So there is some degree of public engagement and expert testimony on it, but it's not quite the same as I think you're describing, where a state of California appoints a group of wise men and women to be on a commission that makes the decision. It doesn't recommend, but it makes the decision.
Right. And they're supposed to be, kind of like average Joe citizens, was the idea. They took applications from around the state. Thousands of people applied.
Who points them?
I can't remember. There's some complex system with like multiple screens to limit partisan influence. Yeah, I can't remember all the details. But it's a, it's a model to think about, and then scale down to the county level.
Yeah.
All right. Well, with that, we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For having us.
Are you kidding? That was great.